Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call our City Council Committee the whole meeting for Wednesday, March 29th, to order. You know, at this time for our moment of silence, you know, we want to keep in, keep in our thoughts and prayers, the people in New Zealand, you know, realizing the, the issues of terror, but also in hate travel around the world. And fortunately, unfortunately, they're not limited to any particular part of the country, part of the world that we live. I think we all need to be vigilant and find what we can do to find hope and love and inclusiveness, not just diversity, but inclusiveness in all of our communities. So with that in mind, a moment of silence, please. Alderman Tompkins, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Tompkins, and thank all of you. Brian, would you call the roll, please?
Ambrose.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Rossin.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Tompkins.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Clule.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
And Dunn.
Here.
Ten present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. And again, as we begin this meeting of our City Council, I would again want to welcome all of you and those in attendance and those who are viewing this meeting on television or on the Internet. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, and please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenport's, Davenporters and viewers throughout the region by way of our TV broadcast. We're happy that you're participating in your city government and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adults, seniors and families in our community, those in attendance and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence your cellphones or other electronic handheld devices as they can interfere with the audio system here in the chambers. If you wish to address the council on a specific item that appears on a committee agenda, you are encouraged to do so during that standing committee. You'll also have the opportunity to address the council under the public with business portion of the meeting, which will occur towards the end. When addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself or the committee chair, and speak to the council as a body and not any single member. We will ask that you limit your remarks to no more than five minutes, and I ask that everyone observe, and I know you all will, the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity and good taste. So thank you again for being here. Is there a city administrator update this evening?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. It's good to have you back, by the way. Secondly, we have three public hearings this evening. Our first, they all fall under Public Works, and Alderman Dunn will lead that discussion and that public hearing, and Alderman Condon, as his assistant, will participate.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open the first public hearing on the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the East 36th Street reconstruction from 115 feet west of Davenport Avenue to 120 feet south of Kimberly Road. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open public hearing number two on the plan, specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the West Second Street and Marquette Street sewer separation project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. Public hearing number three is on the plan, specification, and form of contract, and estimated cost for the West High Street flood mitigation project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, this mo, this public hearing is closed. That's all we have this evening for Public Works, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. We have no presentations for tonight's meeting. Are there any petitions or communication from any of my colleagues or from myself? And I'm going to start with Alderman McGinnis for her report.
Thank you, Your Honor. There's still time to sign up for Project Renewals Fit Fest. That's 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., and it's Saturday, April 13th. They're trying to get folks to sign up by April 1st in order to get a free tee-shirt. The fun takes place along Warren and Sixth Streets. Kids under 12 compete for free on a fun partnered obstacle course, and all the dollars raised help pay for Project Renewals After School and Summer Activity Program. This is a great neighborhood grassroots program that's been going on since 1974. They do need adult partners for participating children. So if you want more information, want to register, please call 563-324-0800 or go to wwwprojectrenewal.net. And I want to be the first to say Happy Spring, which started at 4:58 Central Time today. Just a reminder that with spring comes cleanup and that no sticker yard weeks will begin April 1st and they'll end on Saturday, April 13th. So here's a really great chance for all of us to dispose of the debris we never got rid of, me included, before the snow started falling in early November. It was November 8th. Yard waste can be set out for pickup or dropped off at the compost facility during this two-week period, and if you want more information, just type yard waste fees in the search box of the city's website. And another reminder that the corridor cleanup is this weekend. If you want to help, you can check that out on the city's website as well. There's several corridors throughout the city that we're looking for volunteers to help. And I know everybody's thinking about flooding as well. There will be two informational meetings for property owners and the 24-foot flood plane. Not that the city's expecting it to be that high, but that's, they picked everybody in that, in that, in that flood plane. Letters went out yesterday to these folks. The meetings are Thursday, March 28th at 6:00 at the Police Department, Saturday, March 30th at 10:00 a.m. at the Roosevelt Community Center. So if you're interested in that, you're certainly free to attend. And then on March, Thursday, March 28th, here's a free event for youth. Bestselling author Jason Reynolds will speak and sign books at the main branch of the Davenport Library, 321 Main Street, at 6:00. Library is asking for people to register so they can make sure and accommodate everyone. If you don't know about this author, he is an amazing, award-winning author of young, adult and middle school novels and poems. He began writing poetry at age nine, and he hasn't stopped since. So if you want to register for this, you can call the library at 563-326-7832. That's everything I have tonight, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Tompkins.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just wanted to share again that I have a ward meeting this coming Monday at the Eastern Avenue Library at 6:30, and it is a free event also, just throw in there. And the speaker will be Brandon Wright to share the upcoming budget. So anybody's welcome. You don't have to live in the 8th Ward and just kidding about free. We don't charge for any ward, ward events. So hope to see some people there. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I don't see anybody else. Actually, with Brandon being there, it could be a large moneymaker, so, but thank you. There are no other items, any other information this evening. We have some action items for discussion. The first area to be discussed is community development. Alderman Rossin will lead this discussion, and Alderman Ambrose will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have two items on the agenda this evening. First item is a second consideration for ordinance for case REZ 19-01, request by Bradley Matthews to rezone approximately 1.1 acres located at 5,000 Grand Avenue from I-1 Light Industrial District to RMF Residential Multifamily District. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Alderman Mattson.
Thank you, Chairwoman. If there's no objection, I'd like to consider moving this along and voting second and third next time. So I'll, I'll recommend that.
Thank you, noted. All right. Any other comments from council on this item?
I think there was a motion and a second.
Do we need to vote now? Yeah. Do you want to do a voice, voice vote or just a simple aye would do the trick?
A voice vote.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second. Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign? All right, there's been one opposed. Thank you, and we'll move on. Resolution, item number two, resolution setting a public hearing on the proposed conveyance of the following city-owned urban homestead properties in 4th Ward, parcel H0010-04 at 1412 West 15th Street to Kelly Torres petitioner, and in Ward, in 5th Ward, parcel E0016-22 located at 1501 Eastern Avenue to Kelly DeBolt, who's also the petitioner. Anyone from the public would like to comment on either one of these items? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on, and I would ask Alderman Ambrose to set an agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Number one on discussion and number two on consent. Motion.
There's been a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed, same sign? And that takes care of community.
Thank you, Alderman Rossin and Alderman Ambrose. Our second area to be discussed is public safety. Alderman Gripp will lead that discussion, and Alderman Dickman will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a resolution closing various streets, lanes or public grounds on the listed dates to hold outdoor events. A, Davenport Schools, intermediate and high school track meets, various dates, times in April and May 2019. Closure portion of East 36th Street from Brady Street to just west of Durham School Services at 3640 Davenport Avenue. B, Stickmen Racing Group, Easter Egg Scramble, 5K Run Walk, Saturday, April 20th, 2019, 7:30 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Christie Street from East 11th Street to East 12th Street, East 11th Street from Christie Street to Jersey Ridge Road, Jersey Ridge Road from 11th Street to Middle Road, Middle Road from Jersey Ridge Road to East Meere Drive to Bettendorf City Limits, northernmost westbound lane on River Drive at Davenport City Limits to River Street, River Street from River Drive to finish at 11th Street and Christie Street. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on either of those items? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, those items move on. Item number two is a motion approving noise variance requests for various events on the listed dates at the listed times. A, Davenport's Riverfront Improvement Commission and the Regional Development Authority, 2019. Music on the River, Peterson Pavilion in Leclerc Park, various dates and times from June 20th through August 2019, outdoor music over 50 dB, 7:00 p.m. unless otherwise noted for approximately two hours, and you all in, can see the dates, times and bands there. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this? Anyone from the council? This item will move on. Item number three is a motion approving beer and liquor license applications. New license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area, location transfer, et cetera, as noted. Rockingham Liquor, 2423 Rockingham Road, license type E liquor, C beer, B wine. The Filling Station, 500 West 3rd Street, QC Times Lot, outdoor area, July 27th, 2019, Bixie Vent, license type B beer. Portillo's Hot Dogs, 2741 East 53rd Street, outdoor area, license type B beer. Assumption High School, 1020 West Central Park Avenue, outdoor area, April 26th, 2019, Havana Nights, annual fundraiser, license type C liquor. And Gonzo's, 3923 North Marquette Street, outdoor area, May 3rd through the 5th, 2019, Cinco de Mayo Event, license type C liquor. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on any of those items? Anyone from council? Those items will move on. Alderwoman Dickman, will you please set the agenda?
I move that all items be placed on consent.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor? All opposed, same sign? And that will conclude public safety this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp and Alderman Dickman. Our third area to be discussed is Public Works. Alderman Dunn will lead this discussion, and Alderman Condon will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have six items on the agenda this evening. Item number one is a second consideration of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 12.20 Right-of-Way Management Regulations to clarify specific standards for wireless structures placed within the city. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution approving the plan, specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the East 36th Street reconstruction from 115 feet west of Davenport Avenue to 120 feet south of Kimberly Road. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council. Seeing none, this item will move forward. Item number three is a resolution approving the plan, specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the West High Street flood mitigation project. Before I ask for any comment, Brian Shad, will you come up, give us a overview of this project?
Brian Shad, Public Works. Just a quick little summary on this. We've seen maintenance issues through the past. These are the old-style, single intake grates with the small, narrow holes in them. Some of these are actually served by as small as eight-inch pipes. We see these clog up, leaves and such debris in the area. So this project will add in open-throat intakes, larger pipes, basically take away that, that maintenance issue, help with localized floodings in, in this area. Just as a reminder, I mean, this will not handle those six-inch, 500-year storms that hopefully we don't see again for a while. This is for those high-frequency events that we see more often.
Thanks, Brian. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council. Alderman Ambrose.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. This neighborhood, over the last few rains, had really had significant impact, even to the point where, you know, cars were floating. And hopefully this is going to address some of those issues, and I really appreciate Nicole and her staff getting out there and coming up with a solution to this, and hopefully it'll be significant enough to address it. Thanks, Nicole.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move forward. Item number four is a resolution approving the plan, specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the West Second Street and Marquette Street sewer separation project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council. Alderman Ambrose.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Do we have something from staff? Can you talk about the impact that's going to have to South Marquette Street? Because last year, that section was closed for quite a while, and the traffic was going down an alley. What's, what's the plan for this year?
This, um, the, the main goal of this project is to maintain, maintain compliance with our DNR consent order. What we found is we have a combined sewer in the area with both storm and sanitary. So what this will do is separate those out, make sure the water's going the direction it should be, but it will also include intakes along Second Street, and we should see less backup.
Will Marquette be completely shut down or will it be done by?
The, the majority of the work is on Second Street west of Marquette. There will be some localized lane closures, but there shouldn't be a, a major impact.
So Marquette should be okay?
Yes.
All right, great, thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move forward. Item number five is a resolution approving a contract for the Davenport Rail spur extension, EDA 67906084, construction to Langman Construction of Rock Island, Illinois, in the amount of Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council. Do we have somebody from staff? It's my understanding that this project actually came in under budget.
Somebody should say that.
Somebody would.
Emphasize that.
Could you come up, could you come up and, uh, that doesn't happen often, so we're kind of excited up here.
Brandon, I'm wondering, how do we write in the minutes your thumb going up? So I'm just wondering.
Bruceburger Community Planning and Economic Development. So yeah, this is the project we've been waiting for, for a while, that involves the lion's share, the funding coming from the U.S. Economic Development Authority, and yeah, it came in under budget by, Brandon's telling me, 4.4 was the original estimate, so it came in quite a bit under, so, which is a good thing.
That's, that's good news. Thank you. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council. Seeing none, this item will move forward. Item number six is a resolution awarding the contract for the replacement of roofs on three buildings at Water Pollution Control to Economic Roofing and Installation Company in Bettendorf, Iowa, in the amount of $324,000. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council. Seeing none, this item will move on. Alderman Condon, would you set the agenda, please?
I move to put all items on consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Opposed? This, this moves on. Thank you, Your Honor. It concludes Public Works.
Great. Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Condon. Our last area to be discussed is finance. Alderman Mattson will lead the discussion, Alderman Clule will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. Some kind of cool things here on finance tonight, so first one is a resolution setting a public hearing on the proposed conveyance of partial Yankee 062105 Bravo lying west of the resident, residence at 6,700 Jersey Ridge Road for April 3rd, 2019. City of Davenport is the petitioner. Anyone from the public like to comment? Council. Okay, very good. Number two, resolution authorizing the submission of a passenger ferry grant program application to the Federal Transit Administration Section 5307 for grant assistance with the replacement and enhancement of the Lindsay Park Channel CAT doc system. Would anybody from the public like to comment? Council. Right? Number three, a resolution approving the Fairmount Cemetery Assistance Agreement between the Fairmount Cemetery and the Crematory Association and the City of Davenport. Anyone from the public like to comment? Brandon, if, or I'll just say quickly, if you just give a quick update, brief, and we'll thank our partners here. Mr. Funeral Director.
Yeah. Brandon Wright, CFO and Assistant City Administrator, and I'll keep it that way, if that's okay. So we have the, the Fairmount Cemetery Financial Assistance Agreement in front of you. As we talked about a little bit yesterday, there is a process by state code where a cemetery, when it goes into receivership, works its way down to other interested parties until it falls upon the municipality if there are none. We are fortunate that we've had some good partners in this, in the Pine Hill Cemetery. The representatives are here tonight, and they have stepped up to the plate, are taking that over. This is a six-year agreement that will help them get up to financial sustainability for that cemetery, so that ultimately it can remain in private hands in the long term.
Thank you. So I just want to take a moment and say thanks to you and the staff and my colleagues here and others, and of course, our friends from the, sorry, 1st Ward and Alderman Dunn for working this out. So this is a good thing to keep us from owning a cemetery and having people that actually know what they're doing, doing this instead of us. So Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you. I do also want to add my thanks to the, the Pine Hill, the, the folks supporting Pine Hill Cemetery folks who've been, worked so hard. I know this has been a tough time for people who love that cemetery and have been committed to it for a long time, and so I'm excited about this agreement. I have spoken with the gentleman from Pine Hill, and I am going to be asking that we are, we have a, we have a, we have a, number five in the agreement that talks about that interior, exterior projects or repairs, plan for the mausoleum or crematorium, will go before the Historic Preservation Commission, but I am going to ask, and I've talked to him tonight, that we do an amendment next week that the properties that we specifically say that they will be added to the Davenport Register of Historic Places, and so I'll be bringing that forth. This will, placing both of these on the register will help. There may be potential for additional, especially the mausoleum, which is not listed in the National Register, for tax credit possibilities to help offset some of the costs. This is going to be an expensive place to take care of long-term. I'd like to see the city's money go further, and maybe this would help, and also to make sure and underscore that the historic nature of these buildings be retained. So I'm going to be asking for that next week, so, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman McGinnis. Okay, number four, I'm sorry, anyone else? No. Number four, resolution accepting the Main Street Landing master plan as presented by the Downtown Davenport Partnership and the Figgy Art Museum, and establishing a task force for the purpose of recommending a final design for the regional activity at Main Street Landing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment? Council. Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Alderman Mattson. First off, I just want to say thank you to our partners, the Downtown Partnership and the Figgy, and our staff folks, as well as the Riverfront Improvement Commission folks. We worked on this for, for quite some time. I don't know, maybe, maybe even up to a year or around there. So there was a lot of conversation between different stakeholders to get to this point. I think the rendition that we're adding to River Vision is the best that we've seen yet. I think that it's something that we can sell to the community, that we can get community partners on, on board, that we can finance it incrementally and, and get this, get, get this done, get it moving forward in the next few years. I also like, in this, this resolution, the task force model where we have representation from all of these different stakeholder groups to come together for this regional activity area, and it, I was gone last week, but a couple of weeks ago, Mayor, we had talked about Alderwoman McGinnis and myself serving on that task force, and if, and if that's the, the way you decide to go, I can assure you that we will see to it that there'd be a lot of public input, that we bring in everyone from the community to look at this regional activity area, to have input of what they want, and that we're going to set the bar pretty high on this, and if we put something on the riverfront, it, it's going to be top-notch and it's going to be supported by the community. And then also, on that same note, I would also ask that, and the mayor and I have talked about this, but I wanted to kind of say it publicly, is that we, we need a, a group of people appointed by the mayor who are out there actually thinking every day, how are we going to get this funded? What community partners do we have? What state grants? What federal grants? What nonprofit dollars? What, what money is out there to get this done? And I think we need a group of people who that is their mission, so five years from now, Main Street Landing is a, a reality rather than a dream or a concept on paper. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Mayor, you'd like to comment?
Thank you. Very quickly, first, we'll do it right now. We'll appoint Alderman Gripp and, and McGinnis as the two representatives. I've heard from the others, and this is a good fit, I think, for everyone. Prior to Alderman Gripp and I discussing this, I'd already discussed this with our city administrator. I'm going to lead that other group as to try to bring that public-private partnership entity together from the city's representation. We're still going to get the representation from all the individuals we've talked about. Obviously, the Figgy, the Downtown Partnership, all need to be involved. I've spoken with Kyle about this already, Kyle from Downtown Partnership, and we're looking at, how do we move this on that bigger picture? This is a part of the Main Street Landing area, taking a look at the whole thing, getting the whole community involved, but also a smaller group that looks at the funding areas over the long term. We know as a city, we can't fund it all, but the, I think the community at large would be interested in being involved, so a companion group to the one that, that our two Aldermen will be representing on, one that's going to be looking at the long-term financing related to this and finding fundraising and, and partnerships to make that happen as well. So I think we're on the right track. Thank you again to the partners, and this is an opportunity to make something even greater happen on our riverfront. Thank you.
Good, Mayor. Okay, thank you. I just want to add a couple, two cents, where I think it's wonderful that Alderwoman McGinnis and Alderman Gripp have the passion to, as he's mentioned many times, he likes this, and so putting those two as part of this is a, is a great opportunity to have two of our best representatives looking out for this project. And I think in the, in the last, maybe year or so, or even two years or so, I've, I've noticed, and I've been on the council a while, there's a great era going on right now of partnership between private and public and a lot of activities, whether it's the downtown or other places, that are all coming together, and, and with the mayor kind of leading this, I think this is a wonderful.